We're here with Matt Peppin for the site walk, uh, part two, and I'll turn it over to Matt.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for joining us. Uh, what's today? Today October?
Twenty-fourth.
Not October yet.
September twenty-fourth. We're here, uh, on a site walk, our second site walk onsite for the, uh, Acton gravel pit. Um, it's an application by R. Peppin and Sons in Sanford, Maine. And, uh, today we're gonna be checking out the extraction area near the H Road a little better. Um, and we're also gonna be taking a ride down to West Shore Drive to take a look at the, um, one extraction area down there. Um, so thank you for joining us. Yeah, right now, we're at the, uh, proposed entrance or, um, where we're gonna come in. And we've got, Corner Post did come out here and they've marked out, they got some flags in the trees for me. I think I can see one down there, actually. Um, and it looks like we're just gonna need to do some light trimming on some of these branches over here to try to get our site distance, but. So we're gonna walk, you guys wanna walk up to the, uh?
So really, the excavation is gonna go here?
Yeah.
So this is the entrance to number one, so to speak?
Correct. Yeah.
Yeah.
Because all this hill's coming out, right?
Yeah, yeah, most of this, this hill right here is a pretty big escarp gravel. Um, and, yeah, it'd be pretty much this hill, which is the excavation.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Right, it's more like leveling in this area than digging down.
Right. But there is, but there is design throughout.
It'll be eternity green.
Yeah. You're gonna have to get yourself established in here.
Right, I know, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, once you start digging into it. Right, somehow, though, it can get through somehow.
Somehow get from there, yeah, from here.
And nothing's happening over here, right?
No. Uh, we're probably actually starting to get to where the land trust will own. Um, on the left side, hand side here. Um, I think this is about where we probably left off.
I think it's back there.
I think it was right here, yeah, because we didn't go up this thing.
So I didn't introduce Rodney with Flycatcher, and I should've done that. Um, Rodney is a wildlife biologist who's, Rodney, is that correct? What's your official?
Yeah, wildlife biologist, wetland scientist.
He's here for any questions today that you guys have and, um, he's helped us out a lot with, um, the wetland studies, the vernal pool studies. Um, looked into various other things for us along the way. Um, good guy to have at our side and, uh, here, uh, here to help today, so should've introduced him. There he is.
Morning.
Good morning. Um.
Can we look where we are now?
So we are right. There's the entrance.
Yep.
Down the trail.
That's a great question. Um, that did turn out.
I think we're kind of probably in this area here.
Okay, so you are proposing to move the trail. The purple is the, um, proposed donation trail?
Um, yeah, but that. Okay, yeah, looks like we're trying to move it over to the, um, I think, I think this was actually mapped, though. I think that's where it goes. So, I got, this, this is a, um, slightly older drawing, because I was trying to find a bigger one.
I don't see purple on this.
Uh, red's the boundary of the land trust.
Right, thick red is proposed donation, but thin red is snowmobile trail. But I don't see thick purple on it.
Yeah.
It's the same as what comes off of, of where we were parked, and he said he could walk in, so that's this trail.
I think we're on it right now. It's this thing, and then this is a difference.
Because we were right on the edge of, uh.
Yeah. Yeah, we're sort of right here-ish.
We definitely want.
Yeah, that, that, right there, that circle right there is probably this low area, right here.
Yeah, right.
That would be my guess.
Right, you can see it, yep. In the basement.
Don't think it's any lower than that.
So we are looking at land trust over this way. Um, and one way or another, we are intent on connecting from here to here with the snowmobile trail, because it's a pretty important route for a lot of people that are trying to go from, you know, poor people's pub down to the south end of Square Pond. You can see the contours right here. It's pretty steep.
This is, um, that's part of the twenty-five percent of the.
Yes, so we're gonna.
And that's marked up here?
Yep, should be marked. Uh, Corner Post told me that they came out, so. No, we should be seeing that.
That guy's, yeah, kinda assuming.
Kinda assuming, yeah.
About six hundred, can you see that? I was kinda thinking that the edge, you know, the, maybe the edge of the excavation right there, so.
I think that must be the, uh, edge of the vernal pool buffer.
And that other one says V R?
V R?
V R.
Yeah, it didn't say, didn't say V P. Right.
Oh, maybe that's the end of the extraction.
Yeah, because, well.
Well, Matt, you got a problem with, uh, needles out here?
Sorry, I was out here last weekend.
Yeah, we're like, right.
E L two.
We're just entering this area, as far as, no, but I don't, uh. Right, we're on the trail, so we're like right here. Well, it looks like we're gonna come right up on the lake, and this, this wetland is pretty steep. And we'll kinda know where we are, if we make it.
What do you think we're looking at here, Rodney?
I think those pink flags are the extraction area, because we've been paralleling it.
All the way there. Is that purple, man? Proposed snowmobile trail.
Well, we're on it, we're in it.
We're in there, yeah.
It's a good thing.
Why don't, they wanna keep it out of the destruction.
Little wetland earlier than that. So like, the extraction, and I'm just waiting there, but it's just a part of the, on the way to the. Yeah, I mean, is that twenty-five percent? You know what I mean?
Can Rodney tell?
Well.
Or is it hard?
What's up?
This is the trail we're on, right, Gavin? The purple?
Yeah, yeah, it, it, it goes with the white right here.
Yeah. Is that, what were you saying, twenty-five percent?
Yeah, I mean, that's a huge area.
So, oh, is the question, well, we're just, we're just trying to get a sense of the size of the overlap between the buffer and the extraction area, which is this, this darker area right here.
Yeah.
But it's fairly large.
Yeah, so it looks like, right, you've got twenty-five, twenty-five percent of what, what this one would be, and then twenty-five percent of this one. If it's more than that, then it would be, it would take different permitting than the permit by rule.
Right, yeah.
We keep blocking up the trail, see if they'll kinda cut us.
Are you gonna keep, uh, you're gonna keep a hundred-foot wooded buffer with the don, off the side of the donation parcel, right? That was in your operation.
I said that the land trust had to keep a hundred-foot buffer, but we don't have to keep a hundred-foot buffer.
Right, we'll, we'll be looking at that at some point, because, you know, here's a hundred from the road. I feel like we maybe get that hundred line.
Then we'll have to move the, the whole land trust piece, make it smaller, because we're not, we can't give up a hundred, if we're gonna donate this land, we're not gonna give up a hundred-foot strip of the gravel.
I'm sorry, we don't need to go over, you know?
Yeah.
We're just looking at it.
Yep.
Is that, I, I don't think we're to the right of way yet.
No, no.
Still like in this vicinity.
Yeah.
So that trail's not on there. Yeah, we're not there yet, though. Right, but we're only right here. Because we just went past that thing. We didn't walk, we're, we're turned around like this. This is, this is our orientation. And just past that, where you can see, so we're like in this area.
So it's part of the, we're on the top of them all, right?
We're on one of these two trails.
So it probably comes in here?
Yeah, I guess so, yeah.
We're like, we're there right now, according to that.
Yeah, yeah.
And this is a pretty flat trail.
Right, and those pink markers are the edge of extraction. How many times did, come on.
That's my dad, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah. It must go underneath, it must be the edge of the donation boundary here, that disappears when I leave here there. Yeah. So we're gonna actually cut this one a couple vernal pools in a minute. Yeah, exactly. Yeah, this is the overlap. Everything to the left is the overlap.
The oldest one is Richard.
Yeah, I can see it. It has to be short.
Right. Everybody sees something different. Chris has got the high view. I think that's the edge of the extraction line.
Yeah, E L ten or yellow.
Yeah, like right here.
You could follow the trail in and, and find that, that marker buffer.
Either way, or we can go this way, but then we'd be entering the.
Do you wanna go check out?
Well, we're gonna parallel the way, so.
Yeah, or we could go, like, walk up a little further and check out some of the.
So we're, so we go this way, we kind of go around the edge of the scrap.
Yeah, I would prefer.
Yeah.
Well, that, yeah. And then you gotta do it every year, every year, go back, I, I, I told my dad. So your property value. The next year, when you have sixty-five, they'll fill up the paper, which brings you to the highest level. And then you just, every year, you just.
So we're pretty close to where the right of way would come from.
Um, no.
Pretty big. Uh, they go in the wild, they do go, they do go in the, the proper reference. That has, uh.
Here, maybe. About, I, I don't think this trail's not on there.
What are we looking at, okay?
This, this vernal pool right here, and we're right, we just, that, like, right there is that little pink nugget. Coming from sort of.
And the only thing that may be different on my map as we're walking around is the, um, the boundary for what they might give to the, um, land trust. I know it's changed a little bit. My line is, you know, a year old or, or maybe not, six months.
Right, right. As we walk, it's similar.
It's similar, but we may see that we're not quite on. Everything else should be.
Yeah.
Pretty darn close.
Right.
And when I don't have my external antenna, you know, this is within fifteen or twenty feet, whereas if I had it, it would be.
Give us an idea of where we are, anyway.
Yeah. We don't need, we're just trying to get a sense of it. We're not really like, I don't know how thorough we have to be, or not, we're just approving the. We get a sense of, I mean, it would be cool to see, but we don't. Yeah, we could either go back and then go in and check those out, and just continue this way and cut over anything. Yeah, we'd just backtrack, and then we'd be like on the other side of that. We got on, you know, up on this flattery area here, we could get over there, but. We are right here. Yeah, we're like almost to the right of way. Yeah, pretty much, yeah, we looked at this.
Yeah, we were on the edge of this one, this kind of, uh.
Yeah.
We have to see kind of over them. This is not a vernal pool?
Don't know.
There is a trail that goes from here, all the way down to the stream crossing. That's a long walk.
Yeah, but why are we going?
Yeah.
Now you have to.
Right, right. Right, because this road right of way, it probably isn't flagged out, I guess, so we wouldn't be able to see that. I was kinda curious what that was like in this buffer area, but. We're not gonna be able to find it, so. It does right in here.
Yeah, yeah, I'll keep going now, we're good, yeah. Um, my aunt Jan, my aunt Jan is.
Yes, Janice, is it Janice or Janice?
Huh? I'm going, I gotta go to Janice.
Oh, yes, I see Janice, I haven't seen Janice in years.
And there's one up here, but I don't know if we can see this one.
We'll probably see the bigger one.
Yeah, this is the one that I F and W asking for a hundred-foot buffer instead of the seventy-five proposed.
Yeah.
Which, I mean, twenty-five feet makes sense, I mean, it's not gonna really affect the amount of gravel, you know, that they get.
Right.
Because those are weird details, when, when, I kinda wanted to look at this thing. Of course, this one was defined as non-significant, so this map, you know.
You guys can just keep walking and.
I know, I, we are, we can go up there, but we're not gonna see.
Don't worry, I have my trail, we can, we can down, we can.
We're down together.
Yeah. Yeah, we went through there. You can see the back of the one that we saw right here, we were over here, and then we passed over there. Couldn't really see much of this one, it was very typical. So we're in the land trust donation park. Yeah.
Um, coming in, this pond is pretty good. There's like a, right here, there's like a trail, sort of. We could park here, come up to the pond, and walk over if you want to.
Right, because you own right to the road right here.
Yeah, so this would be a good.
Yeah.
Um, or we could, you know, if you want, we could. We could walk up the stream, or we could get to this trail right here, but that's kind of a long way.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Someday, when I make a little, yeah, trail, like Kevin's.
Actually, two-point-two-million-dollar one.
That's two-point, I was gonna have, two-point, tug my pop-out gear, started.
Now, what was that, Ted? Like, they're coming in?
What was what, sorry?
The.
It said it was a surveyed point, like, it was, it was, I think it was even a driver's. Yeah, or a driver's corner, I think. I don't think it's a, it's not like a buffer line or anything.
We shouldn't let people know we're on the West Shore Drive end of the pit, man.
Oh, yeah, we're on the West Shore Drive end of the pit. Um, taking a walk up through, um, coming up to a small pond that we have up here. And we are in, um, like, an extraction area at this point, okay, we're probably about a hundred feet from the roadway over there. Um, so we're gonna walk up to the pond, and then we're gonna go over and look at the stream, um, we're at the culvert crossing.
This is pit two right here?
Yes, extraction area two.
Or three. Three's the one through there, three.
Oh, no, we are in three.
Hey, too much food, yeah, they're probably not ready.
This is a non-significant vernal pool, um.
I don't hear it.
Yeah, yeah.
What's the best way to get from here to that trail over there?
I don't know, man, that's why, I only know going the other way.
We're gonna have to cut through the woods and try to find it, go this way.
We're here.
Here's the trail, yeah.
Oh, yeah. So like my dad's talking about, right around the corner, see how the, it turns right into a straight hill?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we're right on the edge of the donation, so to speak.
Right.
Oh, no, the donation's right here. So this, you're just retaining this, yeah.
Um, this is part of the donation piece, probably won't be super valuable for them, because it's really steep, but this is where I was talking about, that they could have like a nice picnic area.
So, yeah, this is a, they've, you've expanded a little bit in this.
Yeah.
Where are we right now, Matt? Oh, we're right.
Uh, down, like, we're.
On this trail, yeah.
Just like you said, we're, right here, yeah.
Okay, we're right by where we gave them, we gave them the small one right behind us.
Yeah.
Okay.
And like you said, if you, if you go right up the trail, turns, you can see it turns right to.
Yeah. And it's up there that they're gonna look down.
Yeah, this would be like a really cool picnic spot, I think.
Yeah.
With a great view. Um, and we're headed towards, if we go this way, we're headed towards the stream.
We gave, we're behind us, we're giving away. Size perfect. Exactly what we were looking for.
Here's our stream.
You're gonna remember, it just rained a lot, too. There's nothing. Comes right down by Joyce Bassin's house. Can't place, can't believe. Culvert. There's a culvert down there. It's a big cement culvert.
Steel pipe. Oh, yeah, it's not even like, uh, it's not like corrugated. It's a rugged steel pipe.
Yeah, thick.
Yeah.
Getting a little painful.
It's at least like thirty feet long, probably, huh?
Okay.
On the other end, of course.
Yeah.
A leg.
Stretching a leg.
We got a pretty thick edge here.
This is, uh, more.
That's the ship, I think.
Yeah.
But it's just all like big cliffs, you just walk, the trail goes all the way around it.
Oh, my God, I noticed it. When you take the care of, um.
Uh, we went through, um, um, oh, shit. Damaskata, I think, um. Where was it? There's two points you can come out of. The one's walk quicker, and, uh.
Was it near Damaskata area?
To the winter time, they come up?
It wasn't Boot Day.
Oh, yeah?
No. You can get there from Boot Day, though. There is a ferry that goes from Boot Day. Oh, yeah, no kidding. Yeah? Oh, man, kidding.
Do you like hurricanes in Canada? There's one hotel? My brother did an Airbnb on it.
Ree is gonna get driven across here into number two, and then over to the processing. Well, they're obviously gonna have something. Like this side just gonna slide right in.
The brewery, everything, so we ended up buying a couple of barrels, my brother, wasn't he went a different time? He didn't realize that ginger beer had no alcohol.
No, I mean, not like they're like bleeding out.
Yeah, that's it, yeah.
Doesn't even taste. You would have to number.
Yeah. Certainly. But at least it's not too steep on the side. It's not like this, at least.
Yeah. You go back from Rockwell?
It could be, certainly.
Part of Acadia is kind of crazy.
Because like. This thing goes up.
So you can take a bridge there?
On both sides.
Yeah, there's a bridge that comes from the mainland.
So did you go all the way up to Acadia to get to Stonings?
You don't have to go up all the way to Acadia, you can cut it from like Buck's Court area.
Yeah.
Gasteen is, um.
It's pretty steep.
Never been out to Acadia here.
Yeah.
Once the kids are a little bit older.
We can either go back the way we came or or we can go up and around and walk down.
Shift them around.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Yeah.
There in there's a trail.
Oh.
We can take you to the other end on the road, on West Shore Drive, you want to see where on West Shore Drive?
Yeah. Yeah.
There's a.
There's a trail up here on the left that takes you right to West Shore Drive. We just passed it.
Oh, yeah, let's take that one down back.
But it's a better way back.
Okay, good.